In the back of the building, and we're here today to talk about the proposed new revision to the 10-year facilities and infrastructure. Matt, do you want to say something, or do you want me to just turn it over?
No, just go ahead and turn over.
All right, Liz and Scott, here you go.
Absolutely, we're excited to be here today. This is part of the process of Lincoln Public Schools where we continually update our needs, present them to you as board members, and constantly look for solutions to meeting those needs. Tonight is also our official update on the strategic plan. So you'll see a slide that references the strategic plan for the school district, and we can also talk about your annual goal, and I think Dr. Joel and his superintendent update this evening will kind of talk about our progress on developing the Superintendent's Facility Advisory Committee. So I know Scott Weeskamp has a lot planned for us, so let's just get started.
All right, well, good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity. And we're going to talk about a lot of things tonight. We'll try to keep the presentation somewhat brief, and so there's a lot of information that you will need to digest, and we know there will be a lot of questions, and we probably won't have near enough time tonight to address all that. So post-work session tonight, we will have opportunities for board members to get questions to us via email that we can get responses back, and it'll be a collective Q and A type of a document so that you can see all of that information. Also after tonight, we will have a link or a way on our website for the community or the public to also ask questions about the 10-year plan. So we want to make sure we're getting information back to you. Will we have all the answers tonight? Probably not, but we'll get those answers to you rather quickly. So we want you to know that this is a working document. The last time it was officially approved was in December of 2013, which was just prior to the 2014 bond issue in February of 14. We did review the plan, though, two years ago in December of 2016 with a follow-up work session in March of 2017. So this is about two years since the last time you've seen the update. You will see that the numbers have changed, the list of projects have changed. This is a working document, as mentioned. It's unfunded, so it means there needs to be some kind of action or process to get to the point where we implement some of these projects. So lots of questions, lots of information. The last time we presented a lot of information about the comprehensive plan. David Carey will be here tonight to give a little bit of a brief presentation about the comprehensive plan, but we're not going to spend as much time educating tonight as we are just about the plan itself. So the first thing that I'd like to do is acknowledge a number of people. I have a group from operations sitting in the back of the room, and I'll have them kind of wave so you know that they're a very integral part of all the work that we do, along with the business affairs staff. But many people in operations, as well as many people in curriculum and other areas of LPS contribute to why this plan exists and why some of the things are on the plan that are there today. So it's not just one or two people, it's a lot of people. It's a team effort to get this document put together. I want to thank Dr. Joel and Dr. Standish for giving us the opportunity, but the most important one that I want to thank is you as a board, because this came into being about 2005 when we developed this plan prior to the 2006 bond issue. And at that time, when we passed that bond issue, it was 250 million. It was one of the largest, if not the largest, bond issue in the state of Nebraska, and we accomplished a lot in that bond election. And so this plan developed from then, and it's kind of transposed into what it is today. We'll talk about that. But you as a board, previous boards, you as a current board, and even future boards, I think this is critical that you spend this kind of time planning. And whether it's a 10-year plan for school facilities, we all plan for retirement or other things in our lives, it's a 10-year plan, and we have buildings here in our district that are 100 years old. So a lot of planning took place before our time, and a lot of planning is going to take place after our time. But it helps position yourself and future board members to make good decisions, and that's what it's all about, is being able to position yourself to make good decisions. So we hope you understand that magnitude of it. Look at it as a tool in your toolbox that you can use for future plans and facilities within the district and within our community as it grows. So with that, I'm going to move on to a couple of slides. This first one talks about influential factors, and I think it's important that you understand kind of the 40,000-foot view of why the 10-year plan exists and what influences that plan. And as you've heard, the last couple of years, we've talked about enrollment growth, and we'll see some slides in a little bit about how fast we've been growing. And it's really a factor of how fast our city has been growing. And we all know that it's been 800, 900, even over 1,000 students per year of growth that we've had for the last 10 years. Last year, this current year that we're in, I think that number was 251, and you're going to see that as well. But that steady accelerated, or even accelerated, growth has had a huge impact on our facilities. We have buildings that are crowded, we'll talk about high schools and what that means. We also have buildings that aren't crowded, that have space, and what does that mean? Do we look at boundaries? Do we look at other ways to take advantage of the seats that we have available? And this plan reflects those types of decisions and processes that we need to go through. So enrollment growth has probably been at the forefront. It's not at the top of the list because of that, but it's one of the factors. Program deficiencies is another thing that we always look at, and that relates actually to the third one on curriculum delivery and technology. We all know that we've implemented a lot of technology the last two or three or four years in our buildings, and that's had an impact on how we use our facilities, whether it's the classroom or any instructional space. It's different today than it was five years ago or 10 years ago. And so we look at those deficiencies within each school to say, do we need to make modifications, facility modifications to accommodate that? The technology one, even though those in the back of the room may say that was very difficult, that was easy because we were putting in projectors and monitors and audio enhancement systems. But when they talk about moving walls or adding things of that sort, it's more complicated, and those things show up on this plan. So two and three, program deficiencies, curriculum delivery and technology, they have an impact on why projects show up. Safety and security, that's a fairly new one, even though if you even look back 30 or 40 or 50 years ago, safety and security was still important in our buildings, but it's become more on the forefront today based on our society and the way things are happening around the nation and around the world. And that won't change. We will continue to look at that. Lincoln is a friendly community, and we want our buildings to be friendly and welcoming, but we also need to make sure that we're safe and secure for our students and staff and those that are in our buildings. And so that will show up from time to time, and we spent quite a bit of money in the last bond election to take care of safety and security needs. Sustainability practices, excuse me. This is a pretty overarching umbrella in terms of what that means. You could say, well, that's recycling. Yeah, that's a simple one. But we've invested in geothermal for the last 20-plus years. That's a sustainability practice that served us very well and saved us as a district and our community a lot of money. And so we are branching out into further implications or applications of sustainability practices, and we're looking at that very hard because we want to be a leader in the forefront of educational facilities and facility design and what we do with sustainability practices. Will we spend money that doesn't make sense? No, but we will spend money that can save money in the way that we invest in our facilities. And then the last one, which is probably the one that we think is the most important, is protecting our investment. And we can talk about building a brand-new building, but we don't build it and walk away. We continue to have operational costs year in and year out after that building opens. And so if you look at an initial investment of a building, and over the course of its lifetime, an educational building, that initial investment of the actual building cost ends up being less than 5% of the overall cost of that building and what you spend on it over the course of its lifetime. That's hard to believe or hard to imagine, but for instance, Lincoln High was built in the early 1900s for less than a half a million dollars. So put that into perspective, and in the '06 bond election, we spent $29 million refurbishing Lincoln High. And so again, that 5% or less is reality because schools aren't built for 10 or 15 or 20 years, they're built for 50 or 60 or 70 years. And you look around our community, and they are. We have a lot of buildings from the 20s and a lot of buildings from the 30s. And so that initial investment and how we spend that money is really critical. We want to have good products and good materials that are going to last longer than a short life cycle or lifespan. So protecting our investment, our community also uses our buildings a lot, and we've talked about that. We actually keep track of those hours in terms of hourly use of our facilities, and I think that number is close to 300,000, 300,000 hours of community use in our buildings. And that's like maybe a YMCA basketball team is practicing for an hour a week at Maxi Elementary School. That group is calculated as one hour. So think of 300,000 hours across our 60 to 70 facilities, and that's hours that are outside of the school day. So our buildings are heavily utilized, our community expects to be able to use our buildings. That's a good thing. We want to make sure we protect that investment so that they have a great experience when they are using our buildings. So those are really critical pieces of information that influence why the plan exists and what it looks like today. My next slide goes to actually David's presentation, and I'm not sure if he's shown up, and he doesn't look like he has some. So we'll come back to that. I'm going to push through these slides rather quickly, and then I'll let him address them when he gets here. But he was going to talk strategically about the comprehensive plan. This is one of his last slides, and he calls it kind of a heat map, and I'm going to reference it, and I'll let him come back to it. But I'm going to share a slide that you have seen that we have developed in-house about what we call the hotspots of growth around the community. This heat map is where building permits have been taken out, building and safety, in the last year or two, and it basically is a mirror image of the same hotspot map that we have developed. So I think it's just important to see, and the darker the color, or the orange or red, that is tremendous growth in those areas. So here's a shocking number right in front of you. I always kind of go to the bottom line when somebody gives you kind of the budget and all those kind of things. I start at the bottom line, I look at the bottom. $640 million of needs, okay? That's the current number that you'll see on the bottom of your plan, and you should have that plan in front of you. This is the sheet that we're looking at, 11 by 17, and it actually is double-sided. The backside is infrastructure, and that's labeled in the upper right-hand corner in blue, but we're looking at the facility side, upper right-hand corner in yellow, okay? You go to the very bottom, 638,377,000, so nearly 640 million in needs. Two years ago, that number was around 500 million. And you're going to say, what has happened in two years? We've really grown, or we have that many more needs in just two years? And yes, we do, the list is that much longer. Part of it is the fact that this is a 10-year plan, and we have projects that come onto this list because of life cycle. And so we look at the life cycle of an indoor air quality project, the life cycle of a roof, the life cycle of systems that we've invested in that, once we get into the 10-year and they're going to be part of their life cycle, terminates in that 10-year plan, they show up on the list. So more of those projects have shown up on the list, but some have exited that list because we've completed the projects. But we've grown by $140 million worth of needs since we met two years ago. We're going to focus in a little bit later on Tier One. So that's just an overview of where the plan's at today. The history of a plan, I won't spend much time. We talked about how it initiated in December of '05, and we've had several renditions of it that have been approved. That's those on the board. And the last time in '13, we not only approved the facilities plan, but we approved the infrastructure plan. And that goes back to kind of protecting your investment. We have a long list of infrastructure items that we believe are just as important as building new buildings and new additions to our facilities. Taking care of that, protecting our investment, might be roofing, might be flooring, might be mechanical systems, might be controls. There's a long list of that. You'll see an abbreviated list on the back of that sheet that you're looking at on the 10-year plan. We'll spend some time briefly talking about that later, too. So that's on the back page, Tier One and Tier Two. So that's the history of the 10-year plan, won't spend a lot of time. Here are three numbers that we've kind of thrown at you the last three or four years, and if I were to make you raise your hand and tell me what they meant, it was the last five years of growth. So 4450 was three years ago, 4858 was two years ago, 4167, that's five years of student growth in our district. So one year of 251 does not make a trend or does not change the fact that we are growing, continuing to grow at a very rapid pace. If we have 251 again next year, we may start to look at that as a trend. And quite frankly, this plan has already thrown a little bit of a conservative look at the fact that we have had one year of that, but that means we're going to pay close attention to what those numbers are next fall. So those are the last three years, five years of growth. All of those average in excess of 800 students a year. If you look at this chart, which shows you the 10-year change, you can see the last three years, the 10 years, the last five years, seven or eight years of five-year change, and the individual years. And so you can see, going clear back to '08, '09, where it was 591, after we got past that, 900s, 900s, a couple of lulls there again, and that's, I think, when we moved the age on kindergarten, starting kindergarten, but a lot of 900s, 800s, 1222. So that average continues to be at 800 students, and we'll keep a close eye on that because it does have an impact on what staff's recommendations would be for student, for growth in new So here's a two-year analysis of building utilization by grade level. And you can see, this is cumulative of all of the elementaries, all of the middle schools, or all of the high schools. In 2016, 85% on elementaries, 98 on middle schools, 106 on high schools. That's about the first time we were really telling ourselves, you know what, the high schools are getting pretty crowded, and we need to start thinking of a plan. Last year, elementaries creeped up 1%. Middle schools actually went down because we opened more middle school, and that helped the overall capacity when we look at the cluster of middle schools. High schools went up another 3% or 4%. Those are the things that we track globally, but that doesn't mean we don't have seats available in specific buildings. And that helps us analyze the use of buildings, maybe boundaries, maybe other circumstances like that, so we can maximize every seat that we have available. What staff would say would be an ideal percent utilization of a building would be around 90%. If we could have 90% use of a building, that gives us room to accommodate those bubbles where it's not like if you had a four-section building, which is four classrooms per grade, and you said, oh, that's 100 kids per grade level. It doesn't always work that way. That might be 106 kids in one grade, which means you've got 26 or 7 or 28 kids in a classroom, and it might mean 90 in another grade, and that means you might have 21 or 22. So it's not a perfect world in terms of how that works. And so it's easy for us to look at those broad numbers and assume, well, every building's fine, it's in the 85 or 86%, but it's not that perfect. It really comes down to each individual building. We try to, as a staff perspective, help each building understand how to use their building the best. Another thing is just based on types of classes or classrooms within a building. And we've used an example of Campbell Cabot, Maxi Roper, which were all built at the same time, so it's a great comparison. They are all, you would assume, have the same capacity within that building. But one building may have more special ed or special needs students than another, which dictates that more classrooms within that building are dedicated to lesser numbers of population in that classroom. And so all of a sudden, instead of each building having, let's say, 20 classrooms that you can put 25 kids in, one might have four special ed classrooms and a resource classroom, and the other one may only have one. And that all of a sudden means you don't have the same amount of general ed-type classrooms that you can use your multiplier of 23 or 24 kids per classroom. So the capacities vary even in an identical building, if that all makes sense. That also helps us analyze the availability or what the capacity of the overall elementary, middle school, or high school population is. So it's a very complicated formula. Tonight, you will not have that in your packet of information based on capacities, but you will soon have that as we're finalizing those calculations at all levels. So why the 10-year plan? The following comment to that is always, well, why not? But it's part of what your objective is, as board members. It's part of your strategic plan. And so again, it's a tool for you, it helps guide you in terms of decisions that you make. Whether we do nothing or whether something happens from this, that's still going to be up to you as a board. You seek a lot of community input. We're going to talk about the Superintendent's Facility Advisory Committee at some point. You've had a high school task force, we had quadrant forums regarding high schools. You seek tons of input to help you accommodate your strategic plan and the direction of where you're going. You also have annual goals and priorities. And so these are consistent with what you're trying to accomplish as a board and what you're addressing Dr. Joel and the executive team and staff to do. These are consistent with what you're asking us to do on your behalf. And so I think it plays heavily into that, and it's very important that we follow what you're asking us to do. The last one, this is just a piece of information that I wanted to share that was on our website a few weeks ago. We just completed our accreditation report. It was a glowing report, we were all very proud of that. And one of the comments in that report was facilities and technology. Even your older buildings look awesome. They are awesome. Every building that you go into in this district is awesome. I don't care if you go to a building that's 80 years old or a building that's eight years old, they've all had the same amount of tender-loving care to take care of them. We've invested consistently. Nobody can criticize us for not doing that. We have done a great job of that. You as a board have directed that and been consistent in the way you've directed staff to make sure that those things get done. I would put our facilities up against any school district in the country based on what we have, what we've done, where we've been, and where we're going, and it's because of your support, but I would put ours up against anybody. So you should be proud of that, but again, that's where we're headed. This is a plan that I was just going to reference back to David's presentation. This is the comprehensive plan. The yellow area in the middle is basically the city limits as it is today. The areas that surround it that are kind of pink and lavender and crosshatched, it's kind of looks gray on the slide, those areas are part of the 2040 comprehensive plan. So in 20 years, all of that area will be built out based on the plan. So that's a lot of growth when you look at the square miles that's part of that, and you can kind of see how it borders around the perimeter of the city. Lincoln will grow into all those areas by 2040. The very dark green areas, the edge of that is 2060. So about a year from now, the Lincoln, the planning department is going to update the 2040 comprehensive plan. It's going to become the 2050 comprehensive plan. So a good share of the dark green area is now going to become part of that new plan, which means those pink and lavender areas are going to expand based on where they believe they're going to invest in infrastructure and future growth in and around our city, which means we need to position ourselves to be ready for that growth. And we talk about that as we buy sites and those types of things. So just kind of a heads up, those are the things that lie in our future that we don't control, but we follow the lead on what's being developed. This is a land use map that relates to that. The gray area again is the city of Lincoln, inside the city limits. The colored areas are part of the 2040 plan, and if you look off to the left, the one that's most important to us, I call it golden rod, kind of that orangy color that's very at the top, residential urban density. Single-family rooftops for the most part, some multifamily but single-family. And so if you look at all those areas around the perimeter, we expect more houses. And between now and 2040, those areas are going to fill in with neighborhoods and residential development and housing. So those areas aren't red or purple for industrial or commercial, they are golden rod or gold for housing. That's the plan. Here is the hotspot growth map that you've seen many a time, and it relates to that kind of heat map that we shared earlier. And I think we're well-positioned in those areas. We keep a close eye on that based on where growth's going on, and this next map shows where we own property. And so in many of those areas, other than that one kind of lone circle in southwest Lincoln, we're kind of positioned, we've positioned ourselves to have a school site if and when it's time to build a school to accommodate that growth. And as you know, we've just recently acquired an additional site. We've made some adjustments to another parcel we've owned. We've also talked about that we have a number of others that we're in discussions with developers on. So we have a plan in place that we're working towards acquiring additional sites to accommodate those needs. So it's good to know that those who preceded us made good decisions and started to buy property years ago. We like that plan, and we'd like to continue that. You'll see on our plan later on as we talk that we've actually targeted some money to continue that practice. So recent community engagement, we've talked about the high school task force, high school quadrant forums, current formation of the Superintendent's Facility Advisory Committee. You've all been involved in providing names, and I know that that group's starting to come together. The first meeting is January 15th. But I want to go back to But I want to go back to the high school task force. And that was a pretty comprehensive document that was put together. You've all seen this. And it has a long list of recommendations within that from many subcommittees, right? And they talked about the need to accommodate growth at the high school level. Seats for two thousand to twenty-five hundred high school students. It doesn't say exactly how to do that. It's probably a hybrid of many things. It says, hey, can we grow our programs at the science-focused program or arts and humanities? Or can we grow the program at the career academy? Or can we create another focus program? Or can we build a high school? Or can we do a combination of all those things? That's what staff has interpreted that as. You'll see on the plan again tonight that we've given a couple of options. It doesn't mean it's all the options. It's a couple of the options in terms of new facilities. And so we want to make sure we're listening to the community, but ultimately, you're going to give us direction in terms of what that solution is. But we need to make sure that we're listening and we get those types of things on the list if we believe there's a need. When it comes to high schools, you heard us say from staff, the ideal population in our six existing high schools is about eighteen fifty to nineteen hundred kids. I think we've said that a number of times over the last ten years. Options along with the high school options that we've mentioned are, well, we could add on to those. That's another option that doesn't show up on the plan. We could add on to our current ones. But we also have core facilities, and that's a very broad brush term that would need to be addressed as well as just classrooms. We have lunchrooms and kitchens and libraries and parking and a number of other things that really right now are built for that eighteen fifty to nineteen hundred kids. We know they're being taxed at three or four of our high schools today because we have populations of twenty-two and twenty-three hundred. That's three to four hundred kids more than those buildings really should be serving ideally. And that goes back to that kind of ninety percent utilization of a building. That's why we feel comfortable at that eighteen fifty to nineteen hundred. That's like a ninety percent utilization. But we know we can flex our muscles a little bit and take on more. We just wouldn't want to do it year in and year out. That's why we're talking about other options and ideas today. So that's a little recent community engagement. The next series of slides, some of you may remember these. Go back forty-five years, and we looked at the city in twenty-year increments. And it's hard to see all that on the plan today. But this is nineteen seventy-three, and a couple of things to note, Lincoln was fifty-one, fifty-two square miles. Not very big, but big enough at the time. The district was about seventy square miles. Pay attention to some of those, but you're going to get this slide presentation so you can read into the details. And then you go twenty years later, Lincoln's now sixty-five square miles. It's grown by fourteen square miles in twenty years. Well, that's less than a square mile a year. That's really not a lot when you think about it, less than a square mile. A square mile's about six hundred and forty acres. You can get about three houses an acre. So that's eighteen to nineteen hundred houses in a little more than a year on that increment. Well, that doesn't seem to be too distressing, but back in the seventies and the eighties, that may have been a little bit stressful. But that wasn't a great growth. But now you start to look at what that means to our district in ninety-three. And so now I go to two thousand thirteen, Lincoln is now ninety-one, ninety-two square miles, and it was sixty-five. So now in the next twenty years, it grows twenty-five, twenty-six square miles. So it's starting to get more aggressive, and the rooftops are coming a little quicker. And it shows based on the facilities that we built, based on the two thousand and six bond issue and the last bond issue. So it's getting more aggressive because we're bigger, and when you grow at one and a half percent, it compounds itself over time. So there's ninety-three. There was thirteen. And then we started a new one that's only five years out from the thirteen. And then you can see the overall comparison of all the statistics, and that's kind of fun to look at those, and you'll have this document. And then we do it graphically. We show you how that's grown over the last forty-five years. And then you throw the 2040 comprehensive plan line on there. You can see all those areas between that kind of black and yellow dark line that are going to fill in with that pink shading in the next twenty years. That's a lot more square miles than the twenty-five that took place from ninety-three to two thousand thirteen. It's exponential in terms of how we're growing because we're just that much bigger. So a very helpful map, if you want to see it graphically or in numbers. This is the map we looked at earlier that talked about the comp plan, and it overlays our hotspots on it, so you can see where the rooftops are going today, where building permits are being taken out. David Carey was going to share with you some of the permits that are being taken out and how that has impacted the city growth in the last several years. And I would say, you go back to the two hundred and fifty-one growth this year, I think building permits reflect that, that Lincoln is still growing. Maybe we're slowing down, but that's a good thing. We're still growing at a very good rate, but maybe not an aggressive rate like we were, and we'll have to keep a close eye on that. So ten-year plan. We're down to the last two or three slides. You have this copy again, that's the facility side. On the backside is the infrastructure side. And at the very top, the first section that says tier one, it has a line in gray that's the subtotal line that you can see. Clear off to the right, three hundred and thirty-four million. Does everybody see that in the dark gray? That's the facility list of needs, tier one. And right below it in orange is the infrastructure list of needs, thirty-five million, three hundred and thirty-eight. Those numbers are built on a schedule that we plugged in to get these accomplished in the next five years based on a midpoint of construction. Right now, there is no such schedule that anybody has said, here's a funding source, a mechanism, bond election, whatever that means. That is not there yet. We are expecting, anticipating, planning with a schedule to see what it would look like so that we can give you a real true number. Because if you slide to the left of the column in yellow where it says project cost estimates, that same list of projects, three hundred and thirty-nine million, is thirty million dollars higher based on escalation of interest to midpoint of construction. Thirty million dollars just because we plugged in a schedule. But that is an important schedule because so many districts municipalities pass bond issues based on just the yellow column. And then they design and go out and bid the project, and it's over budget because they didn't plan for costs to increase. And so we, you, have done a good job of that on our ten-year plan to make sure there's a midpoint of construction. That's been based on a three percent annual increase. That could fluctuate. It's been higher than that, and it's been lower than that, that that's what it's based on currently on this plan. You could say, well, we've looked at the last five years. That's not fair. It ought to be two and a half percent. Well, then we'll change it to two and a half percent. We think that this is a conservative. It's a good number based on projecting what the future might be. But we can change those things. Any of these things can be changed. So tier one, which is what we're going to focus on for the most part, and then we'll allow you to ask some questions. This is what staff today would say are projects that we think are pretty important, that if you were to try to find ways to fund or finance these, we would say, we like all these projects based on that influential factor list, growth, program deficiencies, safety, security, curriculum delivery, technology, sustainability practices, protecting our investment. These are the projects that we believe. We know we can't afford all these. There's probably even projects in tier two that we believe ought to be in tier one, but right now, we believe these are probably the most important. And we still know that we're not going to get everything that we as staff propose, but we're using the staff's lens of how we see it from where we sit. So I'm going to walk down through those. They're not in a priority order. Typically, they're in an alphabetical order. And the top two are Everett and Park Elementary and Middle School Indoor Air Qualities. They're the only two buildings since the oh-six bond election that haven't had an indoor air quality overhaul to that building, other than Scott and Lux that assumed to be new buildings at that time because they opened in ninety-seven. So when we had the oh-six bond issue, well, they're only ten years old, and we had the last one. Now they're getting to be seventeen or eighteen years old. Well, it's not time to overhaul a building. But you know what? If we don't do anything to Scott and Lux that aren't even on tier one, if you're a bond issue or two away, they're going to be thirty years old by the time you address them. But we're taking care of those investments, so you need to realize that as well. But they're not even on this list. But Park and Everett need to be. They were overhauled in the late eighties, early nineties, and they're at that age where we need to spend some time and money on those buildings to invest in geothermal and other improvements, other code improvements, to get them up to speed. The next projects that we go through, and you will see areas that are blocked out in gray, anything that's in gray is an option. So those are not calculated into the bottom line of the tier one. They are an option. And so the very first one is a good example. It says new preschool through fifth grade elementary school in southeast Lincoln. And we mentioned the Schleich site, which is the one that we just recently purchased out there south of Rockabye. And so that's a four-section proposed, eighty thousand square foot building, twenty-three million and some odd dollars. Or an option is, you don't build that, and you add on to Clefcorn and/or Wyssong at the same time to accommodate growth in southeast Lincoln. That gives you an option. As we said earlier, there are probably other options, but that's a very logical option for that part of town on the elementary side. I'm going to keep going through these, and then we'll let you ask questions. Then there's a south elementary, Wilderness Hill site. That's where we just finalized a deal where we exchanged some property, that property that is to the south of Yankee Hill between Forty and Twenty-seventh. This proposes a six-section, ninety-five thousand square foot. You can see it's about twenty-eight million total build-out midpoint of construction. We have another one northeast part of Lincoln, Waterford site, which we currently own, which is in east Lincoln, east of Eighty-Fourth, north of O Street, out in the Waterford development area. We own that site. It's basically almost surrounded by rooftops as we speak. All of the streets are in around it. It's a matter of turning the soil and building a school, and by the time the school is done, it will be totally surrounded by housing. And then the last one is Northwest site. And as you, many of you know that have been involved in planning, this has been a struggle for staff, and we'll take the blame, but this is a tough solution because of the pockets of growth that we have in the Arnold area, the pockets of growth that we have northwest out by Fallbrook, and the pockets of growth that we have by Kuzer. And we can't solve all those pockets with one solution. It's just a very difficult problem to solve. And so does it mean two solutions, or does it mean something different? And the only thing that we put on here is we have money allocated, but we said, do we consider an alternative grade configuration type of a facility? And I don't even have the answer to what does that mean? Does that mean a five-eight in Arnold that takes middle school kids out of SCO that helps the load at SCO and helps the Arnold, but it doesn't solve the Kuzer area? Does it mean a lower elementary type of facility on the Pagram site that we own in northeast Lincoln, and that might take kids out of Campbell and Kuzer, but it doesn't solve the Arnold problem? So we have those dynamics working that we have to think through, and it's not characteristic for us to go to a different grade configuration. It's more difficult to manage, whether you're team teaching at a grade level, or whether you're just looking at consistency in the types of services that we provide to students and staff and families. And so I think that's a difficult discussion, not one that we can't have. I just think it's a difficult discussion to figure out what that solution is. But we have plugged in monies because we know a solution needs to, we need to come up with a solution. It may be we need to add money to come up with two solutions at both locations that we've talked about. That may be the outcome of that discussion. So nothing's off the table regarding to that. The next thing we show, a middle school, one middle school. Two years ago, we had two middle schools. That's part of our reaction to a smaller growth rate in our district this year. So we are listening. We are paying attention to that. And this plan will change because of factors like that. So it's not like we're blindfolded. We listen, we look, we watch, we pay attention to those numbers so that the plan reacts to that because it is a fluid plan. So now we show one middle school in south Lincoln. We own property out there on South Forty. This would help alleviate some crowding at Scott Middle School, which is our fullest, but we have other middle schools that are getting close to the limit. And as you can see from the slide earlier where our middle school capacity went down because of adding more, well, this will take that number down in parts of town, but it doesn't necessarily solve the problem in all parts of town. But we are paying attention to that so that we can make sure that we have good middle school opportunities for growth. And I think building one solves that problem today, not two like we had two years ago. So that shows up on the plan. The next one that I'm going to talk about actually talks about two. And right below that middle school, it says existing middle school programs. And in parentheses behind it, it talks about art, family consumer science, ITE and science, or it could be CTE types of classrooms and spaces. We also have a line item just like that at the bottom that says existing high school programs. It's very similar. See those two lines? And I think if you total them up, the first one's about four point seven million, the next one's just shy of seven million. So it's eleven, twelve million. Those are areas that when we did the IAQs back in oh-six and beyond in those high schools and middle schools, that really didn't get an upgrade based on maybe technology that has changed the types of classes that we offer today, that we feel they needed overhaul. And many of you have been in some of those classrooms. I can use a family consumer science lab. I'll look at Kathy because we've talked about this at northeast that's nineteen sixties or seventies. And it doesn't mean the lab doesn't function. It does function, but is it up to date? No. And we probably need to address that. And those things did not get addressed in those bond issues. We spent money on code upgrades, mechanical systems, HVAC systems, because we were trying to air condition buildings, and we were trying to take care of the building shell, but there were things that probably got overlooked, and this is one of those. So we feel strongly about both of those two line items at our middle schools and high schools. There are new buildings and buildings that have been overhauled that would not, this would not fall into that category. So southeast, for instance, had a new family consumer science wing added on in the oh-six bond issue. This would not overhaul that based on the age of that portion of the building. So now we go to high school, probably the hundred million dollar and then some question. We have a high school on there, and you can see in gray, we have an option for high schools. And we go back to the task force recommendation, and again, as I mentioned earlier, the solution is a hybrid of many things. There's not one solution out there that's going to solve why we got too many kids at North Star and why there's too many kids at southeast, and why there's too many kids at East High. There's not one solution that's going to solve that problem. And so this is an opportunity to look at alternative solutions. And we met with each of you individually. You all recall that. And things that we heard were comprehensive. And I think the interpretation of comprehensive is that if we open a building or a program or buildings or whatever that solution is, every kid that goes to one of those buildings needs to have the same opportunity that they have at all of our current buildings. So we can't open a small high school, or we can't open a program that doesn't give that child or that student an opportunity to play football or be on the show choir or participate in speech and debate. They have to be comprehensive and allow all those programs and activities to be a part of their life. We can't open a building that's partway and say, well, seven years from now, maybe we have another bond issue, we'll add on and get all those other things part of the comprehensive. We'll make it comprehensive then. We can't wait that long because kids grow up a lot faster than that timeframe. So we heard comprehensive. And this solution, the option of this solution is comprehensive. One school or two, they're comprehensive. I mentioned earlier, and we've heard this from some of you, what if you add on to some of our buildings? They would be comprehensive. We want to make sure that all of those options are available to all of our students. So believe me, we spent a lot of time on this. You can look at square footages. That one high school is three hundred and sixty thousand square feet. That's a very large community, not a small community. It's a large community, and that's about the same size as North Star and Southwest. If you look at the two, they're not half of that. They're bigger than half of that. They're two hundred and thirty thousand square feet. That means they do have swimming pools. That means they have auditoriums. It means they have multipurpose rooms. It means they have computer labs and science labs and all the exact same things that you have at the single high schools today. So that's an option that exists, and other options can show up over time if that's what's requested or asked of us. We have two other items. We have two other items left. One is new athletic activities complex. I'm not sure if, my wife is in the room, but she's probably cheering for that item, and she did not pay me to put it on there. But as you know, we have six current high schools that tax the Seacrest Complex and Beechner, which is kind of a secondary backup. We have doubleheader games, we have band competitions, we have soccer, we have a lot of things that happen at Seacrest and Beechner. And if you add one high school, it's going to get started, get taxed even more. And so we need to start thinking about what that means. This is not a, well, what's the exact solution? It's the beginnings of a solution that starts to not replicate exactly a Seacrest, but it starts to build a new facility that might be between the size of Seacrest and what a Beechner is. Seacrest is about nine thousand students, or nine thousand seats. Beechner is a couple thousand. It might be a five or six thousand seat stadium that you could even build in phases. You build one side, then the other. I mean, but we have to have the beginnings of that. We believe it probably should show up on a high school site. And we've deterred from that in the past because we have Seacrest right next to Stewart Stadium, which is part of East High. This solution means that whatever high school lands at this location, they will use that facility to practice. But on game day, it will become a district facility. It won't become the school facility. Those are things that have to be worked out schedule-wise, but we believe this facility needs to begin somewhere. In the end, it might have a baseball field, a softball field. It may have other amenities that allow us more flexibility to accommodate more activities. So this is one thing that we believe if we add a high school or schools is critical. The last one on there we talked about earlier was acquiring new high school sites. We think that that plan makes a lot of sense, and so we plugged that on there. So I won't spend a lot of time on the back, but the infrastructure plan, phase one is the top half of the page. Those numbers reflect on the front page in tier one. And you can see that we talk about things like roof, roofing, interior lighting, parking lot lighting, bleachers, family restrooms, HVAC controls. Again, this goes back to protecting our investment, and there's no way we would keep our buildings in as good a shape as they are today if we didn't include infrastructure monies in some sort of financing, bond election, or whatever that might be. If we strictly stuck to general fund dollars annually, we would be losing ground every minute. And so it's really critical that we incorporate some of these costs in any future financing or funding of projects. We've always kind of thrown at you as a board, the ten percent number. We know that that may or may not happen based on all the other needs on the facility side, but we like that as a starting point as we talk about needs on the infrastructure side. So I've probably rambled more than I need to. I'm not sure if Liz has anything to add, but we're willing to take questions. We may not be able to answer them. Listen to comments, however you want to attack it.
So before you start with your questions, make sure you write them down, just in case staff needs to have the right language so they can do a rolling Q and A so that we can refer back to it. Do we know who wants to go first? I don't see. Annie?
So one question that came to me was, in looking at, I'm sorry, I moved my microphone. In looking at the capacity of a building, an elementary was at eighty-five percent and then eighty-six percent. And understanding that, you know, that's from putting all of our buildings together, not just saying every building's at eighty-five percent. Can you kind of put, tell me the thinking behind saying to add at this point a new elementary school? The point being that you said eighty-five percent is about, or ninety is about, you know, your goal. So what is the thinking behind that on the top tier, we need to add an elementary school?
That's a great question, just because you would say, why do we need any elementaries based on the overall eighty-five percent number? And this is really driven by the first item on influential factors. It's based on growth and where the kids are. And if you look at a map of our city that shows where all of our schools are, as the city has developed over the years, decades, the density of our city, inner city is tighter. Lots are smaller, houses are smaller. And in the inner part of our city, we have four houses per acre, where today it's three houses, as I mentioned earlier. All of the growth is happening on the outskirts, and we have actually fairly small attendance areas on the inner part of town. So for us to change boundaries to accommodate some of that growth on the perimeter is very difficult. We can't kind of, that snowball effect of, well, let's make Hartley a little bit smaller, and then let's take what's adjacent to Hartley, maybe a Brownell, and make them, you know, adjust those boundaries so that we can grab those kids on the periphery. It doesn't work that smoothly because of the barriers that we also have talked about, major streets and arterials that define some of those boundaries. And so we do probably have many, some inner city buildings that are less than that eighty-five percent, maybe eighty or seventy-nine or seventy-eight, not a lot that are below eighty, which makes the number look like it is, but it's really the perimeter of the community where the growth is that's demanding the new buildings. But a perfect question, because you could say, well, staff figure it out, draw new lines, let's get all of our buildings in that eighty to ninety percent number, and let's not build any. That would be a great approach to this, but it's not that easy. Does that help answer the question?
Dr. Stanis?
I would add that the inverse is also true. So as we are going to work to get you updated capacity information for this school year, I think that we'll look and see what those numbers look like with keeping in mind the growth that we've had and how it all settles in. Another thing could also happen where if we have a Huntington Elementary, for example, who is stressed as an inner city school and some of the surrounding schools, a new building could then result in boundary adjustments where we're able to relieve some of that stress. So it's that balance of how we manage that capacity, where we can invest. And I think what's really important is we always have an eye on where could the investment occur that could impact, you know, as many needs as we possibly can. And so we definitely have schools within the core of the city that are experiencing stress and are at that hundred percent capacity or even over. So it's really the pockets throughout the community that would result in the need for additional elementary schools.
Thank you. Matt, and then Lori.
First of all, I appreciate the level of detail you guys put together on this. I mean, there's a line for snowblower storage on here. You guys are really thinking through all the details on this, so thank you for that. One thing that I am really concerned about is this three percent annual. Two years ago, I believe that percent was three, was as well three percent, but our inflation rate at that point was one, one and a quarter. Now our inflation rate's two and a half, and we're using the same midpoint of construction. Add on to that, I heard from a local manufacturer this last week that his deal's gone up fifty percent. Local home builders are talking about labor costs going up a lot. And so I'm really concerned about that three percent. How confident are you? Do we need to think about adjusting that at all based on a new environment now, two years later from two years ago?
We keep a close tab on that. We have a lot of, obviously, we have a lot of projects going on, so we kind of see what the market is actually doing. We want to be conservative because, as best we can, because we want to maximize a dollar and get every project that we can. I think we would be questioned if that were four or five percent, that, boy, that's a lot of kind of cushion in there that you're building into the project. So we try to be spot on the best we can. Fuel prices are a huge impact on construction. And right now, we've had, what, a twenty-some cent decrease just in the last couple of weeks, but we also know that it can go up twenty-five cents in a few weeks, and we can't predict that. But a few years ago, a dollar, or gas was close to four dollars a gallon. I recall a few, a period of time, huge impact on construction costs, along with many of the other things that you've mentioned. So we think this is our best guess today. I don't like that to jump around. We think we can make it work. We just, we have a good process that says we're going to stick to that and live with it the best we can. If you as a board said, hey, everybody's telling us that that'll be a different number, we'll listen and change it if that's what we feel, but we feel confident in this number today.
Okay. Lanny?
Thank you, Kathy. I have a comment, a request, and two questions. So the comment, as you mentioned earlier, that you would have the adjusted program capacity and enrollment by each building, I just want to say thank you. I always appreciate getting that level of detail, so I look forward to seeing that. The request, David Carey you'd mentioned was scheduled to talk to us a little bit about the city-county information on growth. Is that something that we could reschedule for a future session?
We can do that.
Not anything that we'd need, you know, in the next couple of weeks, but if sometime early next year we could get that, that'd be great. And then questions. On the chart, on the tenure plan, we have square footages for the new buildings. Could we get the estimated capacity in terms of number of students as well for those?
Yep.
Because that, especially when we're looking at options on a high school, it's helpful to be able to weigh that. And then I want to make sure I understood correctly the division between tier one and tier two. And so you had mentioned that the dollar amount is three hundred and seventy million, and that that was planned over a five-year period of time. So is that, is that based on our community capacity to build buildings, like a construction capacity? Is that based on a finance of how much money we think we could have available in certain circumstances? Or where, where exactly does that three seventy over five years come from?
Great question. I don't, I think it's a combination of all those with a lot of unknowns. You know, we talk about financing, what are we capable of even paying for? I don't even know that number today. I think we can all look at each other and say, what's the number? And I don't think we know that number. I do know that that's a big number, that is probably not a realistic number, and there's going to be some hard discussions to go on to prioritize this list to a shorter list. Regarding the market, we look at that, and the schedules that we've built to get our midpoint, we look at what we think we can handle within our construction market in terms of what we have for contractors and subcontractors. And we all like buy Lincoln, so we don't want Kansas City general contractor up here, Des Moines general contractor. We want local to reinvest our money locally. And so we look at that, too. But I also, as I mentioned, time is money. We want to get done quickly. We want it the day after a bond election, if one is determined, the day after, we have project out on the street to bid. We're planning for success to make sure that we're ready. So all those things that you mentioned are important that we look at to make sure that we've positioned ourselves well for success.
Okay. Thank you.
One follow-up, it might be nice to talk a little bit about the vision for the high school options, potentially the number of students that you're thinking. I know especially the idea that the core of the high school option for two, the ability to expand that, just to spend a few minutes on those details.
High school only? You want me to address high school?
Yeah, yeah.
So if we were to build the one high school that's shown here, that's the eighteen-fifty to nineteen-hundred type of facility, ideal, core facilities, everything, but it allows for flex. You could put twenty-two hundred kids in it, just like we do all of our other buildings. That's what would happen with this one program statement. The two are built with similar core facilities as the one. So the lunchroom is the same size in the two options as it is in the one option, but there are less classrooms. There are less other amenities that maybe there are, I'm just, maybe there's three music rooms in the full size, but there's only two in the smaller one that, once the student population grows, the third one gets added. So the two high schools are designed around a nine hundred and fifty student population. Can that flex to eleven hundred or twelve hundred? Sure. But nine fifty would be about the ideal for those two separate high schools, which accommodates about the same number as the one.
So to make sure I understood what you said, I'll just say it back. So with option one, it's a single high school, eighteen hundred and fifty students, both core capacity and classroom capacity. Option two, which is in gray, would be two smaller high schools with the same core facilities, but with half the classroom space basically for
Correct.
Nine hundred and fifty, about half the students.
Correct.
With the ability to grow.
Right, but one nuance would be that we may need to add a gym. So it wouldn't have the same number of gyms, but it's not that that school would be absent gym or physical education space. So the expansion plan for those high schools in the future may need an additional music room, an additional gym. So you wouldn't expect the core facility to be an exact identical. The amenities would be identical, but the square footages might not be identical.
And the lesser student population would demand lesser sections of a class
Right.
Because of that. So that would be the plan, and we would plan for the full build-out as we design the project.
So basically, the option in gray and the option right above it are the same number of students, roughly eighteen fifty to nineteen hundred students.
Correct, yes.
But the gray option is at two different locations, and it's not the same cost because the, you would have two sets of core facilities.
That's correct.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yep.
Before I go on to Barb, I just want to ask a question on that. So if we were to do that, would we need to look at whether we were going to close our boundaries? Because we would have two different, two buildings with smaller populations, but we pretty much have open requests for enrollment. I think it's something we need to talk about somewhere. Maybe that's not today. Now I've got two buildings that take nine hundred kids. Well, I want my kid to go to the nine hundred kid buildings. All of a sudden, those kids, those buildings have fifteen hundred kids in them, because everybody wants their kids to go to a smaller school that now became the same size as the schools they were trying not to go to.
Good question. Lots of different formulas exist. You might leave open enrollment at the six existing, but have a limited boundary for the other two. I mean, all those things you have to look at to see what makes the most sense.
And then the question becomes, is that equitable? So that's the question that we have to grapple with, but I wanted to throw that out. Okay, Barb, and then Annie.
Following up on the smaller, the two high school option, when a high school is eight to nine hundred, do, does their class, are they class A or B then?
Still A.
They're still A?
Yes.
I know that it's an important concept for us as a district to have neighborhood schools. And so we had some information here indicating that there are some core neighborhoods that facilities are not being used as much as others. Could we have kind of a projection on what transportation costs would be? Because I think that that's also an element that plays into this, as well as the ideal of having neighborhood schools. And then I noticed in our packet, and maybe I wasn't listening close enough and I read it, but twenty-six point two percent of all new dwelling units between twenty fifteen and twenty seventeen were located within established areas. I assume that means that these new residential homes were being built in our core neighborhoods. Is that a correct assumption?
That's correct. And David probably would have alluded to, there is a lot of higher density housing in the downtown area that's part of that percentage, but yes, that's correct. It's redevelopment, inner city.
So that is a value that seems to come through on our comp plans for a number of decades now in fill kind of development. So it could be that we would see these core neighborhood schools start to increase in the number of students going to them naturally. And what I'm trying to get to is, is I don't think we should assume that just because one school is at maybe seventy percent, that's a solution to go and bus kids there. There's expense there. There's also the value of having a neighborhood school. And then there's also this outlier that perhaps maybe will have more increase in student population in those core neighborhoods as redevelopment occurs.
Totally agree. Good comment. And you know, the one thing about some of this new housing, whether it's multifamily, it's affordable housing also, inner city, which is bringing families. So a great point and one that we need to consider and keep an eye on.
Also, in years past, we have made some substantial additions to schools, and the one that stands out in my mind is Roper. So I am glad to see that we do have a southeast So I am glad to see that we do have a southeast option that would consider going and adding on to Clefcorn and Wyson. Those facilities were built to be added on and could easily. It wouldn't stress out the core facilities.
Core was built to accommodate this growth. That's correct.
Okay. So it's been done in other locations throughout the community. And then it seemed like in past years, on the data that you were sharing with us, there was information about portable use. But what's our current and projected portable use? I mean, if we are unable to meet the growth that we see coming our way, what would be a realistic projection of portable use, which is probably not the ideal use of taxpayer resources?
We currently have thirteen portables. Five of those thirteen are at North Star. That's pretty dense. Three of those thirteen are at the zoo. So that's most of those. We have singles at like Scott and Riley and Cahoe. So currently we have thirteen. You will probably see in the next few months a purchase for additional portables due to stress, growth stress in some areas. That could be three, four, or five portables, which you're right, that's not our best investment. But portables are not a bad thing for pockets or bubbles of growth, as long as they're only there for a short amount of time. So we don't want to get into the habit that we used to be in long ago of portables permanently landing for eighteen or twenty years. So portables are in need, even though we don't care for them. It's hard to manage. Safety and security is difficult, all those things, but they are in need. That'll probably never go away. It's just a matter of trying to have a good process that that's basically the last resort until we add on to a building.
And then the last thing that jumped out at me is, is that when we get into tier two, we have no cost estimates on the high school concept programs, as you called them. We often call them focus programs. And is there a reason why there was no dollar amount attached to those?
I think we just have some homework and work to do, not knowing what to build the number around. And I don't want to plug in a false number, and then we come up with a focus program, and then we don't have enough money. I think we have to have a better understanding of what it is. This is a placeholder to make sure we have it on the list. That's why it's there. But until somebody gives us a better indication of what that program would be, I don't want to give you a false sense of, well, it's a four million dollar building or project. We'd like to build a program around it, so it's the ideal program and come up with the right number.
On the flip side of that, if we have no, no forecast, that's the one area that I think in this, and I don't know if this is a bad thing to mention, but it's the one area that I think that we might be able to look to our donor class to maybe assist us with some of the focus programs. But if we have no projection on costs, it's not real, and there's no way we could even go and, you know, commission a feasibility study on it. So if it would be possible to go and give us some kind of numbers, because I've had a lot of contact from parents for the entire time I've been on the board about having a fine and performing arts focus program. I've even been contacted by the university before. There's a lot of interest in this community, but until we start going and getting a concept together and putting some at least projections together, we can't realistically even look at the feasibility of it. So if we could perhaps, not that you need more work.
Agreed. And in the last several months and in the next several months, Dr. Joel has convened some curriculum staff that I've been sitting in on just to listen to the dialogue. We've even had some proposals and suggestions from the business community on potential focus programs. I think you will see that refinement showing up on here between now and next fall as we dig deeper. But it's a good point and one well taken that we need to listen to those, what those needs and particular programs are and get a number to it.
Thank you. And I want to thank you and your staff. This is incredible amount of data and just a wonderful starting point. Also want to thank the past boards and the board members who have, were part of those boards and, and some of our community volunteers. I remember Lanny being a huge shaker mover on helping us get rid of portables. So thank you for this collective effort over these many years on getting this together.
Okay, I have Annie and then Matt. And then Don.
One thing that jumps out at me is, could we get a, the detail is fabulous, and I love the maps, and I do appreciate all the colors. I have to put that out there. I was just trying not to smile too much going, I love the, to me, it really tells a very good story and adds to the detail of everything else. So I do thank you for trying to find other ways to help us understand what's going on here. So I appreciate that very much. I keep, because I can't keep in my head, what's a six-section elementary and what's a four-section elementary? So if we could just add a little bit of that on here when we mention those, that would be really helpful, I think, not only to me, but to others to understand what are we talking about, because I know we noticed that here. The other thing is, what percentage, because it's kind of a bigger, when you sat down to think through this. Could you perhaps tell us what kind of percentage of the planning on here is looking? And maybe not so much in tier two, because I think tier two kind of answers the question of, this is like a lot more the infrastructure. It feels like it, perhaps. I haven't looked at it really deeply. What percentage of like this tier one planning? We know we have kind of two questions that I think we have. And one is, we have a current, we know what our numbers are and where they are and what's being stressed. And we also have a future where we think we know, I mean, we have a really good projection. So when you're looking at this, do you have like a, when you have been working on this and figuring out plans, what kind of percentage is given to both of those thoughts? That's a big question, I know, but I'm, maybe that's not, but I think that's a question that we should be looking at. I mean, we have a current need where we have schools that are bursting at the seams.
Let me try and rephrase your question for you.
You're so good at it.
I, I try really hard.
You're very good.
I think you're saying, what percent of this planning is to meet needs that we currently know about of students we're serving? I mean, for example, we had a lot of conversation about the high school. We've talked about Lincoln High. We've talked about North Star, East High, where, Southeast, where we're serving over two thousand students. So if we were to take, let's call it a thousand students that we're serving in our high schools now that could move to a different high school, I mean, those are students we're currently serving. Versus what are we talking about for growth, knowing that Lincoln continues to grow? One and a half percent in population a year, and that compounds. I think you're saying, you know, what are the now needs versus the future needs of planning? Because this bond issue is a couple of years away, so we're going to be well into our future needs. And then it's going to be several years before we get to maybe address those needs with a second bond issue. So I think you're trying to get to, based on what we're currently serving versus what we're also projecting to serve.
Right. I mean, understanding it's a plan, and then a plan, you know, means not action at this point in time. But I can just see that. I mean, we, we keep talking about that future, and there's part of me that goes, we have, how, how do we kind of wrap our head around, we have a current, really a strong current need, which I think is what people respond to, is like, my kid's going to a high school with twenty-four hundred kids in it. Yeah.
That's current need.
So I'm just putting it out there. Maybe I'm just saying that this is how I kind of have to kind of keep wrapping my own head around it, is that, understanding that this plan and what we're looking at is not going to happen for a while. It's just like most things when you're looking at, working on your own house, what you can do. All right, just put that out there. So my last one is with the athletics complex. You say that Seacrest is really booked. Can you give us numbers that shows us, is it booked at all times? I mean, are we really booking it at all times as possible, you know, all the days that are possible? Could we get some numbers on that? And that with, if we continue, I mean, we just did a lot of work at Seacrest. What kind of impact are we having on the current, on the facility? If we said, we're going to add another high school, bring in that much more here, what kind of impact would it have on the building? So as opposed to looking at making brand new, are we doing, really are we doing all, we could look at the numbers of, are we doing all that we can at Seacrest? And also on that, it's not just Seacrest, especially for, it's also the other.
Beechner?
Beechner, right.
It really comes down to scheduling. We have so many activities that want to fall in a certain window of time. I mean, football, and I'll use that as the example, because we all kind of think of Seacrest as a football field, but it's, it's more than that. But football's usually played on Friday nights. And so we don't play on Saturdays. That's kind of college. And we have played games on Thursdays. And that makes it more difficult if you're on a team playing football to recover and plan for the next game, which is typically on a weekly rotation. So it's really about scheduling the activities that we have internally as a district and getting them all to fit within the window of time that makes sense. Doesn't mean we couldn't play football games on Mondays and Tuesdays, even though we would catch a lot of flack for that kind of a recommendation from the coaches and players and parents of those players. But we have to look at all the options, and then we come back to, well, I guess we can't solve that problem with scheduling. We need to add to the facility. That's kind of what we've done, is we've gone full circle looking at all that. We'll, we'll answer your other question in a later timeframe. But to give you an idea about Seacrest, it used to have a grass field. When I came here in ninety-nine, it had grass, and we had about twenty-five events a year on that field. And the grass got tore up. You play a football game, and it would be wet like this fall, and it was tore up. And it took the rest of the year to recondition the field, so it was ready for the following fall. We put turf down, artificial turf. Now we have close to three hundred events on that field annually. Now, do we have them in late December? Not much to do out at Seacrest in late December, but the window of time, when the season allows, we book that facility as much as we can. If the state changes and says, well, we're going to do events on Sundays or other times, based on the whole high school schedule statewide, we would look at that. But right now, that's not where the state is going. So we, again, look at the window of opportunity and condense all of those activities into that window throughout the year. And we're taxed, and that's why we've proposed this.
Thank you. And with everyone else, this is an amazing amount of forethought and helpful to think through. So thank you very much and your old team.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're at five twenty, and I have Matt, Don, Connie, and then I have mine, so.
I've got a couple of questions. First of all, following up on, on that athletics. So the new athletic complex, thirteen million dollars, so does that mean that the new high school plan that's one hundred and three million dollars has no outdoor practice facility? Or is that, just help me understand what is not included in that one oh three?
The new high school does have athletic facilities as well. There could be a little bit of overlap in that, based on the way it was determined. So in this case, I would expect that the football, soccer, band, field would be one in the same at that location, as opposed to having duplicate like we do, like at an East High and Seacrest. So this would be one facility.
Okay. What about Cooser? So I, if I remember right, Cooser is the most overpopulated elementary school. And, but none of these elementary schools appear to be close enough to relieve Cooser. Am I right on that or am I off?
You're right on that.
Okay.
We need to look at the attendance boundary. We have looked at that. And that's a potential adjustment, but it doesn't solve the problem for the next few years.
Okay.
We, we looked in planning, and I don't know if you recall that, at the total build-out of the area in and around Cooser in terms of how many more houses would come online and how, what that meant for number of kids. I, I think the number was like a couple hundred kids at elementary age, which would put Cooser over the top. We couldn't even accommodate that with portables, you know, to, to make it comfortable. So that's the dilemma that we face.
And that could also come into play where we're referencing that northwest quadrant of the city. And what type of ideas do we want to explore? What type of ideas does the board want to explore? And what type of ideas is the superintendent's facility advisory committee interested in exploring? So the northwest quadrant, I mean, we're not exactly sure, but, I mean, the quadrant is represented on the elementary. We did look at boundaries for Cooser and what a boundary adjustment would do for it to handle the build-out. But you'd have to build something in order to have those boundary adjustments happen.
The last thing would be sort of a request to just help calculate some numbers. And that would be on the southeast Lincoln option. So you gave us two options. One is to build, build a new one, or one is to add on. I guess what I'd like to look at is the total cost if, over the course of, say, fourteen years, we're going to end up with three six-section elementary schools. How do these play out over the next fourteen years? So option one would be, you know, build the new one seven years from now, add on to those older, the existing two. Fourteen years later, add on the, and so I, and then the other one would be to take option two and, and pull those out over fourteen years and get to three six-sections. So if you could help me, just at some point, calculate, because I'd be curious to know, is there, is it a ten percent difference? Is it a fifteen, fifty percent difference over fourteen years? I, I don't know, so I'd really appreciate some help on that.
Yep, we can do that.
Great, thank you.
Okay, I have Don, Connie, and then me.
I just have a couple of brief, big-picture type comments. First, I recognize that we're not here tonight to talk about solutions. But I think that this does, this information does highlight the challenges, some of the interesting decisions that we're going to have to make over the next couple of years. I know that the student hasn't cast force, hasn't met yet. We still need a lot more information. But we have definitely got our work cut out for us on this one and the decisions that we're going to have to make over the next couple of years. I know that it's tiresome to listen to long-term board members talk about the old days. But just by way of context, I'd like to talk about for a minute the work that we did back in two thousand and three or whenever it was, getting consultants to come in and do a building by building, door by door, full assessment of our facility needs. And I would like to comment on the work that you and your staff have done on keeping that current and improving on it to the point to where we get to these kinds of conversations. And we have so much good, actionable data. Other districts don't have this, and we do. And it really aids the decision-making process, but also our communication with the community, so that they know exactly what we're looking at and why. So enthusiastic hats off to you and your staff for the work in keeping this in this, in this kind of shape. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Connie? Good. I think I'm good for now. I think we answered it. Don and I are almost very similar.
Okay, I have a couple. One is the density of the multifamily homes that are being built, because everywhere I drive in the core of Lincoln, I see significant multifamily homes being built. And I'm talking about mega apartment buildings, that's what I would call them, in family neighborhoods, which kind of is a big change. So I'd like to know how we're, we're talking about student density, and I don't need this today, because you can check it. What's the student density in multifamily homes today compared to what it was in two thousand, when we had the two thousand and six bond issue compared to the two thousand and fourteen bond issue?
We can do a dot map and share that. And I think it'll be surprising to see the difference, definitely.
I'd also like to know the changes in affordable, older housing versus what's happening where they're building new housing. I know they talk about building permits, but that doesn't really give us a feel for what's happening in the neighborhoods. Because Huntington, when I first came on the board, was like three hundred kids, and they're almost to six hundred. Okay, the next one is similar to Annie's, but what I would like is, I like a matrix of the use at Seacrest or our athletic facilities, of what days of the weeks we're using it, what kind of events are there. And I know they say we don't play on Saturdays, so to the Cornheaster and, and Westland football gods, some of us remember when we had conflicts and we had to play football for our high schools. And for, not just for my generation, but for my kids in the nineties, they played on Saturdays. If we had to use the facility on Saturdays, what would be the impact on the community? What would be the impact on us? So that's probably something we need to discuss. Is it more feasible for us to use it one more day of the week and stave off this building? Is it more feasible for us to use it one more day of the week and stave off this building and then address more student needs in other ways?
Actually, we play JV and reserve games on Saturdays, so it still gets utilized.
That's why I want a matrix.
It's just not a varsity game.
But that's why I want a matrix, because some of us don't see that use.
Yeah.
So that's what we need to see. And the last one is, these are all of the needs, but as we go forward in the next year and a half, the board will have the ability to sit down with staff and discuss what's the prioritization of needs. This is just what we have here. After the student, or the superintendent's facility advisory committee takes their shot at it and shows us everything, and as all these needs come forward, the board then can sit down and prioritize and reprioritize by what they think is a viable plan, correct?
Yes.
Okay. That's it? Anybody else have any other questions?
I was just going to add, you just highlighted perfectly, the next step is, these needs are then presented to Dr. Joel's superintendent's facility advisory committee. The work of establishing that committee is well underway. We have a routine meeting schedule set to get started after the first of the year, and we would hope to have recommendations presented to Dr. Joel at a board meeting. Our goal right now is by the end of August, and if they complete their work earlier than that, it'll come earlier. But that's kind of the timeline we're looking at going forward. And then with their recommendations, coupled with any refined input from staff, you're exactly right, the board has a lot of heavy lifting to do after that one.
And with that, seeing nobody else's hands up, and we got a 30-minute break if we do this, I'm going to call, adjourn this work session and say thank you, and I look forward to a whole lot more work.
Thank you.